To make sure we're ready to go, I got the thumbs up. So I think without further ado, we will call this city council meeting to order. And Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Councilman Jindon?
Here.
Councilman Leonard?
Here.
Mayor Potem Daily?
Uh, here.
Mayor Dipper?
Yes.
We have a quorum.
Thank you very much.
May I just, um, make a reminder, um, because I did receive a call from a couple, a couple of residents, um, to remind you to use your microphone, because when they look on YouTube, if it's not turned on, you can't really hear anyone.
Okay.
I'm, I'm just impressed we have a viewing audience that's concerned.
And just in time to do the implication and pledge of allegiance, Dr. Rigsby? Thank you. Or do you need a moment? Thank you very much. Mr. City Manager, do we have any items to be added or deleted?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I would like to delete item number eighteen. Thank you.
Okay. Okay, this is the, uh, part of our council meeting where we invite people to come up and speak on anything that is non-agendized. So if you have just a general comment or like to bring our attention to something, you're welcome to come up. You have to fill out a card and, uh, I'm looking over to see if we have any so far. Doesn't look like it, and I don't see anybody running to the front of the room. So, uh, without further ado, we'll move on to our scheduled items. Okay, uh, we have some certificates of recognition for a couple of really important things. Uh, one of them is, uh, we'll start out with a couple of retirements. We're going to start out with our own, uh, Sheriff's Captain Matt Griffith, who is retiring, and we wanted to present a proclamation to him for his years of service. Matt started out, uh, as our lieutenant here, assigned, uh, to Central Station, and then promoted in place, and he has been a fabulous partner and, uh, and just a great all-around team member, so. We have this fancy proclamation for you. Whereas the city of Loma Linda is a law enforcement contract city with the county of San Bernardino, and whereas Captain Griffith began his law enforcement career with the San Bernardino County Sheriff's Department, starting the academy in January of nineteen ninety-one. Whereas Captain Griffith worked as a deputy assigned to the Corrections Bureau from nineteen ninety-one until nineteen ninety-six, until his transfer to patrol in Rancho Cucamonga and then Ucaipa. He promoted through the ranks to detective in two thousand and one, working Highland and the Crimes Against Children detail. He then promoted again to sergeant in two thousand and six, working the Corrections Bureau, then Ucaipa, Fontana, and Internal Affairs. Then promoted again to lieutenant in two thousand and twelve, working corrections once again, court services, and then to Central Station. Finally, he made captain in two thousand and twenty, assigned to Central Station, managing three law enforcement contracts and the county operations for Central Patrol. Whereas, as captain, he served the cities of Loma Linda and Grand Terrace as chief of police, demonstrating professionalism in law enforcement. And whereas on March twelfth, twenty twenty-two, Captain Griffith will be retiring from the San Bernardino County Sheriff's Department with over thirty-one years of service. Now therefore be it resolved that the city council of the city of Loma Linda, on behalf of the citizens of the entire community, present this certificate of appreciation to Captain Matt Griffith.
Did you want me to say something?
Yeah, you're welcome to.
I, I, uh, I don't like even having "Happy Birthday" sung to me, so this is, uh, this is just way too much, but thank, thank you very much. It's, it's been an absolute honor to, uh, to serve the citizens of San Bernardino County, um, for thirty-one years. And, and for the last four years, I've really, really enjoyed my time here in Loma Linda. I've, I've said this before, uh, it's, it's maybe ironic as, as a person who's spent his entire adult career in government, I'm not a real big fan of government, because I think sometimes it goes way too far. Uh, but, but Loma Linda, I think, is a shining example of, of a place where I think government is done correctly. I, I've been, been so impressed with the city staff. They're, they're efficient, they're responsive, uh, they, they don't get involved in things that they shouldn't be involved in, and, and they really do take care of the community, and I think that's, you know, kind of a testament to Jarb and his leadership, so thank you very much. It's just been, it's just been amazing, uh, working for you and working with you, so. And, and then, you know, I've, I've obviously spent four years coming to these meetings, and I think you guys take the right approach. You, you, uh, you're very, you're very focused on the, the, the individual's right, but also on the common good and kind of striking that balance, so thank you very much, it's been an absolute honor.
Thank you again. Uh, just a, a side note, um, my professional career, um, I work in law enforcement, and I've had the opportunity to have many offline conversations, uh, with both Matt and Casey, and, um, work with them, uh, partner with them, and they're both very phenomenal, and this is a sad day for us, but exciting also. And I've shared that before, so good luck, Matt, thank you again for all you've done. Okay, next one, and this one's also very bittersweet, because we're so used to seeing Stan around here all the time. And Stan Sewell, would you please come up and be recognized? Okay, whereas the San Bernardino County Loma Linda Branch Library has been a valuable resource for the community of Loma Linda, and whereas Mr. Sewell began his career with the San Bernardino County Loma Linda Branch Library in nineteen ninety-one, we've got some, some, uh, something in common here. Whereas Mr. Sewell began his career with the San Bernardino County as a library assistant at the Loma Linda Branch Library in nineteen ninety-one, became young adult specialist at the Fontana Branch Library in nineteen ninety-six, started the Family Technology and Learning Center Computer Lab at the Montclair Branch Library to provide access to technology and training for the underserved members of the community in nineteen ninety-eight, returned to Loma Linda Branch Library as the branch manager slash librarian in nineteen ninety-nine, served as club secretary for the San Bernardino Crossroads Rotary Club from two thousand and one to two thousand and eleven, transferred to the Lewis Library and Technology Center in Fontana as the manager in two thousand and seventeen. He finally returned to Loma Linda as the branch manager again in two thousand and nineteen, we welcomed him back. Whereas as manager, librarian, he served the cities of Fontana, Montclair, Loma Linda, and built a connection between community needs with library services, providing a wealth of information for kids and the community, and promoting literacy through reading, writing, and technology to help individuals prosper in personal growth. Whereas on March twenty-four, twenty twenty-two, Stan will be retiring from the San Bernardino County Loma Linda Branch Library with thirty-one years of service. Now therefore be it resolved that the city council of the city of Loma Linda, on behalf of the citizens of this community, present this certificate of appreciation to Stan Sewell.
Thank you.
Uh, you can, but, uh...
Oh, gosh. Um, before I say anything, I just wanted to make sure this wasn't a sting thing, because I did get a call today from the Sheriff's Department, and before I could, uh, get to it, they hung up. So I'm just making sure that I'm not leaving here in bracelets. Okay.
Did they offer you a car warranty, because that might be a giveaway?
They said it was the Sheriff's Department. Anyways, um, what Captain Griffith said, um, I will double that for, um, all the support and assistance and everything you've done for us, um, everything from building the building in the first place, our, um, was it two remodels and an addition? So, um, the city has put its money where its mouth is, and I, I do appreciate that, and, um, we've even had staff as well as, um, council members helping out with storytime. I appreciate the mayor of not Whoville, but Loma Linda doing that for us. Um, and also the, the participation and volunteering. And if I could just recognize a few people here, first of all, the staff. Um, we've had present and, uh, former staff, if you want to stand up and... And family and friends. Anything that we've accomplished, it was as a team, and any problems or issues, I'll, I'll take that myself. But I just wanted to say thank you from the bottom of my heart for the recognition, and I won't miss you guys, but, um, I may be doing a drive, I mean, coming by again sometime to see you folks. So, um, again, thank you very much.
May I, uh, may I recognize the, uh, Stan Brian Law? Uh, Councilman Charlie Umeda, you recognize him wearing a mask?
I've got a question, Stan. Rumor has it you have some special connection with Councilman Rigsby. Can you acknowledge that or deny it?
Um, back in nineteen seventy-seven, we were in academy together in Indiana.
Oh, wow.
So there's job security right there.
We survived...
We were, we were friends and we worked for the same very strange boss.
I, I will neither confirm nor deny.
Thank you.
Yeah, and he, he made the right career choice, he's retiring. Look at me, I'm still going.
Well, um, that was the, uh, probably the best part of, uh, no, we've got one more important thing to do, and then this is the best part of our, our evening. We were approached, uh, by Mr. Len Tavernetti, is that correct, sir? Uh, who I just had the privilege of speaking with for a little bit, um, and first off, I want to say, and on behalf of everybody here, thank you for your service, sir. If you would step up, we have another proclamation. Whereas the citizens of the city of Loma Linda have great admiration and the utmost gratitude for all the men and women who have selflessly served their country and this community in the armed forces and have borne the brunt of battle. And whereas veterans have paid the high price of freedom by leaving their families and communities and placing themselves in harm's way for the good of all. And whereas the contributions and sacrifices of the men and women from the city of Loma Linda who served in the armed forces have been vital in defending the hard-won freedom and liberties of our constitution that we treasure. Whereas the city of Loma Linda as a national health center and home to the Jerry L. Pettis Veterans Medical Center welcomes our wounded and disabled veterans with world-class treatment and support. And whereas many citizens of our community have been awarded the Purple Heart Medal in recognition of being wounded while engaged in combat with enemy forces, a singularly meritorious act of essential service. Now therefore be it resolved that the city council of the city of Loma Linda hereby proclaims Loma Linda as a Purple Heart City to honor the service and sacrifice of our nation's men and women in uniform, wounded or killed by the enemy while serving to protect the freedoms enjoyed by all Americans, and to remember and recognize veterans who are recipients of the Purple Heart Medal. Thank you, sir. If you would step forward and we can present this to you. Would you like to say a few words? Let me get out of the picture.
I'm the commander of, uh, chapter twenty-nine, twenty-nine. Uh, it has that designation because after World War II, when they started the chapter at, uh, Twenty-Nine Palms, they wanted to be twenty-nine. But there was a chapter back east that beat them to it, so they said, "Well, we're twice as good, we'll be twenty-nine, twenty-nine." So that's how they got it. We, uh, have a territory that we cover, it's the inland empire. We have signed up, like this, forty-eight towns, uh, forty-eight cities, two towns, the two counties, and one Indian tribe as Purple Heart communities. Uh, and we enjoy, uh, coming out and meeting the people. Our chapter is small, we have ten members. Two are Korean War vets, they're in their nineties. And, uh, six are, uh, Vietnam vets, one is eighty. The others are seventy. And then we have a flight nurse who was wounded in the Coburn Towers. I didn't ask her her age, but in a few years, she'll be the last man standing in our chapter. We, uh, try to help, um, wounded veterans, but we don't, uh, not help all veterans, uh, who come to us and say, "I have a problem." Because we have found out, a lot of the people here at Loma Linda ha- have helped us find out that just because you don't get hit by a bullet or shrapnel, you still can be wounded. You can be wounded psychologically or chemically, and so you need help too. You won't get a Purple Heart, but you still need help, and we'll help you. So we try to do that, and with communities, and particularly the hospital across the street there, we're able to help quite a few of them. But the number of veterans from the three big wars toward the end of the last century, World War II, Korea, and Vietnam, uh, are about tenfold what, uh, we have seen in the terms of veterans since nineteen seventy-three, when they stopped the draft. So the, the few that go in now, they tend to stay in, they're regulars. Whereas the draftee was two years, and I'm out of here, baby. Uh, and so, but they are the ones that we're treating in the hospitals right now, because they aged as well. But thank you again for honoring us and the support you give us.
Thank you, sir. Well, you don't have to go, the most exciting part is coming up. We're going to talk budget. Thank you all for attending.
I thought they were all here to see us.
Okay, moving on to item number three, public hearing, um, council bill O-dash-two-zero-two-two-dash-zero-one. And, uh, this is probably not going to be the most, uh, fun topic, but, uh, Mr. City Manager, go ahead.
Yes, I, I, I thought they were here for the, uh, for this item, but I guess not. A, a little, a little background, uh, uh, back in nineteen sixty-five, there, there, there was an original agreement, a joint power agreement between the city of San Bernardino and Loma Linda Sanitation, Sanit- Sanitation District, where the sewer in, in, in the area of Loma Linda, uh, flowed and sent to the city of San Bernardino Sewer Treatment Plant. And that agreement was updated in nineteen ninety-four, when the city of San Bernardino is, even though it's incorporated nineteen seventy, is have agreement with the city of San Bernardino for them to, to treat the sewer from the city of Loma Linda. The, uh, as part of the billing for the, for the sewer rate, there's a two portion. One is the city of Loma Linda, which is for the collection portion, where the sewer from the house go from the house all the way to the sewer treatment plant. The second portion of the rate is for the sewer, for the treatment itself at the city of San Bernardino Treatment Plant. So this rate increase is only for the city of San Bernardino, it's a pass-through, okay? So the city of San Bernardino did the rate increase, I mean, the rate study, and it determined that they had to do a rate increase for the next five years. They haven't done any rate increase for the last five years, so if you notice, it's, the, the rate increases a little bit. So, as part of the two eighteen, the law required that the city have to send out the notice to all the homeowners and, and the property owners, uh, within the city of Loma Linda, and we did that in, in January nineteenth of this year. We mailed out five thousand one hundred notices, uh, to all the resident, uh, with twelve return, uh, back to the city. In the meantime, we received a twenty-sixth, um, letter of protest, uh, back to the city. Is that twenty-sixth the latest?
It's thirty-eight.
Thirty-eight, okay, as of today, it's thirty-eight, uh, for protests. But to be able to go against this had to be majority, which is like fifty percent plus one. So staff recommend that the city council repeal the existing ordinance, which is ordinance number seven fifty-three, and introduce the council bill number zero dash two, zero, two-two-dash-zero-one. For the first reading, establish the maximum wastewater, which is the sewer, uh, utility, utility service rates, and change and set the second reading for March twenty-second of twenty twenty-two, which is in two weeks. So that's in my report, sir.
Is there any way we can change the billing agency to go straight to the city of San Bernardino, so when they complain, they don't complain here? Yeah, uh, um, I mean, that kind of goes without saying, obviously, we don't really have a choice in this matter. And I know I've, I've talked to Jarb about other options, you know, what, where other, where else could we go? And, you know, he's explained gravity to me about how things have to go downhill, and, and, uh, you know, we, we're kind of, yeah. So, um, yeah, I'm not sure what else to say, any, any comments here from the DAS?
They got open public hearings, yeah.
Yeah, nothing yet. Okay, we'll open the public hearing, technically. Seeing Milford? No. It's your water that's helping get it there. All right, we'll close the public hearing. We'll entertain a motion.
I move council bill O-dash-twenty-twenty-two-dash-zero-one, introducing on first reading and setting the second reading for March twenty-two.
We have to repeal something before, right?
It's part of the motion.
It's included in it.
Got it.
And I will waive reading of the rest of the paragraph.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a first and a second, thank you, Madam Clerk.
The motion, the motion is to repeal ordinance number seven five-three and introduce council bill O-dash-twenty-twenty-two-dash-zero-one on the first reading establishing maximum wastewater sewer utility service rates and charges, and set the second reading for March twenty-second, twenty twenty-two. Councilman Jindon?
Yes.
Councilman Leonard?
Aye.
Mayor Potem Daily?
Aye.
Councilman Rigsby?
Yes.
Mayor Dipper?
Yes.
The, uh, motion passed.
Thank you.
So this month, we have two meetings, okay, sir?
Right. Okay, moving on to item number five, which would be a joint meeting between the city council and the housing authority to look at our mid-year budget review.
I have a point of order.
Yes, sir.
This item is not agendized on the Housing Authority Board agenda, does that matter? And if not, then we will proceed.
Housing Authority is included, and there is a tiny bit of change in there.
So to the attorney? It wasn't agendized on...
The item is not agendized on the Housing Authority Board, uh, agenda.
Yes, um, perhaps we could consider that at the following meeting in two weeks.
Yes.
Would it be better to move and table it, the whole thing?
No, because majority, the meeting is, 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 is in the general fund, which is in the, the city portion, so.
So we'll just bring back the Housing Authority portion?
Sure, we can do that.
In two weeks?
Yes, Sonia, let, let do the, uh, the Housing Authority on, uh, March twenty-second.
Okay.
Yes, we can do additional, yeah.
It'll probably take about three seconds.
I'm sorry?
It'll take three seconds.
Okay, so we're just going to review it here as a council.
Yes.
All right, go ahead.
Okay, Sonia.
Okay. Good evening, council members, city staff, and members of the, of the audience. Uh, we're here to present the twenty-one, twenty-two mid-year budget review. We're going to start with, uh, the general fund revenue changes. As you can see, they total three million, three hundred and sixty-four thousand, three hundred dollars. An analysis was done across the board to look at five-year historical average plus considered pre-COVID and current COVID situation and adjusted according, accordingly. For some of the numbers that were provided, uh, they were provided from different agencies. For example, property taxes, uh, it was reduced by forty-four thousand, and that number, uh, was received from the auditor controller through a letter that they sent annually. Um, franchise fees decreased by twenty-two thousand eight hundred, and that was based on the analysis that was done. Sales tax, you'll see an increase of two-point-one million, and that number is provided by our sales tax consultant, HDL, and they're anticipating seeing a large increase due to, um, an increase in fuel and service stations as well as an increase in restaurant sales, or people going into restaurants. Um, the TOT, we're anticipating a slowdown, and so we're anticipating a decrease of ninety-six thousand, six hundred. Licenses and permits increased...
If I can, can you speak directly into the microphone, I'm having a little difficulty.
Licenses and permits increased by two hundred and two thousand, six hundred, and charges for services increased, um, by a hundred and seventy-six, a hundred and seventy-six thousand, eight hundred. And the majority of that is engineering plan checks, and these were adjusted based on permits that are expected to come in. The largest, uh, project being Park Two Twelve Senior Living Apartments Project. Other revenues increased, uh, by seven hundred and fourteen thousand, five hundred, and that is, the majority of it is six hundred and ninety-six thousand in mutual aid reimbursements for wildfires. And then you'll see a large increase in operating transfers in and a large decrease in intergovernmental, and that is due to the, the American, uh, Rescue Plan Act of twenty twenty-one, the ARPA COVID funding that we received, we originally budgeted it in intergovernmental, which is federal grants. However, it is, um, to be budgeted in a separate special revenue fund. So this change right here adjusts... So this change right here adjusts for it, so it will now be a transfer in, into the general fund. So the net change, the net increase is three million, three hundred and sixty-four thousand, three hundred.
So majority of funding, the increase came from the state COVID-nineteen stimlet money, in tune of two point seven million dollars.
And you'll see that again later with the special revenue funds. There will be an increase in revenues and then a decrease in expenditures, I'm sorry, increase in expenditures because it's being budgeted in a completely separate fund. Next, we have all the other funds, which are made up of the enterprise funds, and then the other enterprise, other enterprise capital, special revenue, grant, capital projects, debt service, and another one. The sewer decreased in sewer charges, based on historical data, and included a decrease of interest in, of thirty-eight hundred. And then we're anticipating a change in charges for services of fifty thousand. For connected communities, we're anticipating interest to go down by a hundred dollars. For the water fund, the majority of the decrease is in charges for services. And that was based on actual receipts projected an average of six hundred thousand per month. That is still around ten percent increase from last year's sales.
And this is to point out that, I'm looking at Milford, because the state kind of mandated that the city, you have to conserve water, even though we have the water in the ground, but the resident, they do their job and conserve water, so therefore, our revenue decreased. So when they use less water, we also charge less sewer, so.
So it's not a bad thing, but it hurts financially.
Right, right, so, so I look at Milford because he's a chairman, are you still a chairman for the meeting? No, not anymore, but he's on the board, that we meet the state mandate, so.
For other funds, there was an increase of two point six million, but the majority of that is the ARPA funding that was reclassified, and that's a total of two point nine million. So that's what the major change is there. For capital projects, there was a decrease of two hundred and sixty-one thousand for development impact fees, decreased projection based on what community development anticipates coming in, or not coming in, for the rest of the year. For, same with the water and sewer capital funds, there's an anticipated decrease in development impact fees for the year-end estimate. And these are the general fund expenditure requests that the departments have submitted. You'll see a net increase in expenditures of one point one million. And I'm gonna go through them by department. So in administration, the majority of the changes are salary and benefit recalculations based on personnel changes throughout the year with an increase to accommodate, and also an increase in utilities and anticipated single audit costs. Throughout the, the changes that you'll see for expenditures, we recalculated salaries and based on personnel changes, as well as an overestimate at the initial budget projection, you'll see that there's changes throughout the different departments. For community development, there was a decrease in expenditures of eighty-two thousand one hundred, and that's based on the recalculation of salaries and benefits. For fire services, there's a combination of increases and decreases, decreases, but the net amount that is being requested is nine hundred and thirty-three thousand, three hundred. And the majority of that is a request in increased overtime for the fire department. However, that is offset by, partially by the reimbursements of mutual aid.
Where do we see that?
The-
The offset?
The mutual aid, so when the firefighter went and fought a fire up in Northern California.
Where do we see that on here?
Shows up in revenue.
It's in the revenue increases. If you go back to other revenues, the seven hundred and fourteen thousand five hundred. And the general fund revenue changes.
Got it, thank you.
I have a laser.
And all of that is for services that were rendered outside, right?
Yes.
Thanks.
And then lastly, Public Works, there's an increase of, that is being requested for citywide tree trimming, repairs and maintenance of facilities and buildings, and then again, the salary recalculation of salary and benefits. Here we have the other expenditures for the other funds. For the enterprise, that includes the sewer, connected communities, the water fund. There's a total of a hundred and twenty-five thousand, two hundred being requested. For the sewer, an increase costs across the board for postage, professional services, and contractual agreements, and that totals eleven thousand, six hundred. For connected communities, they're requesting an increase of forty-one thousand, six hundred for professional services because of an increase in bandwidth and contractual services. For the water fund, they're requesting an increase of seventy-two thousand, and that's mainly for Mountain View, well number five arsenic profiling and repairs and maintenance of facilities and vehicles. In the special revenue funds, they're requesting an increase of sixty-five thousand, six hundred. And that is due to cost increases in the landscape and street lighting district to cover repairs and maintenance for the remainder of the year, and then also gas tax transfer out to the general fund of fifty thousand, two hundred. For the grant funds, that large increase is mainly due to the ARPA funds that are being transferred out to the general fund, and that's two point nine million. And there's a little bit of a difference, which is gas tax, that is being transferred out to the general fund. And then for capital funds, the increase is mainly due to Bailey Park hydroscaping and irrigation of water track. So the total for the city is four point two million. And here we have the general fund summarized with the revenues and expenditures and the net change to fund balance. So there, we're increasing the revenues by three point three million. We're decreasing, or increasing expenditures for one point one million. And that, it's equivalent to a net change of two point two million to the general fund balance. So we're increasing it by two point two million. And then for the sewer, connected communities, water operations, we're increasing, or we're decreasing the revenues by eight hundred and ninety-two thousand, increasing expenditures by a hundred and twenty-five thousand for a net decrease of one million. So here is the general fund, fund balance. This slide demonstrates the total budget for the general fund. The beginning estimated fund balance during the budgeting process was four million, one hundred and twenty-eight thousand, one hundred and ninety-nine, one eighty-nine, which is based on twenty twenty-one mid-year projected numbers, plus any adjustments in revenue or expenses we foresee happening. For twenty twenty-one, mid-year was reduced by sales tax advancement done in error by the Board of Equalization of about one point nine million. Then at year-end, in the audited financial statements, total fund balance increased by two point five million as a result of operations. Audited fund balance for the general fund was eight million, three hundred and seventy-one thousand, one hundred and forty-one. So this is an increase of four point two million from the beginning estimated fund balance. During the year, council has approved additional expenditures through staff reports, and those numbers have been updated and reflected in the total expenditures and uses, uses numbers, as well as requested, the requests we just reviewed. The net change for the general fund balance will be eight hundred and sixty thousand, six hundred dollars. So as you can see here, we have a beginning fund balance of eight point three million, or almost eight point four million. We're adding revenues and resources of twenty-six point four, point five million. And then we're taking away, or subtracting the expenditures of twenty-five point six million. So we're projecting an ending fund balance of nine point two million. We still have the general fund assigned fund balance of one point two, one million, two hundred and fifty thousand, and the general fund committed fund balance of two million. So all in all, we project to end the total fund balance at twelve million, four hundred and eighty-eight thousand, seven hundred and forty-one.
So I want to point out that we have forty-seven point two percent in reserve, so.
This is the summary for the rest of the funds. So here we have the sewer, connected communities, and water operations in total. The beginning fund balance, and this is the audited beginning fund balance, was three point four million. We're adding resources in total of fourteen million and subtracting expenditures of twelve point seven million, ending with the ending fund balance of four point eight million. For enterprise capital funds, we start off the fund balance with four point six, almost four point seven million, adding resources and revenues of one million, nine hundred and sixty-seven thousand, four hundred, subtracting expenditures of three million, two hundred and forty-two thousand, six hundred, ending at three point four million. And these are the other funds that the city has. These are special revenue funds, starting with one point two million and ending with three hundred and twenty-nine thousand. And that is mainly due to the California street widening and the storm drain installation. For the debt service, there's no change. For the grants, there's a bit of a decrease of twenty-eight thousand, two hundred. For capital projects, there's an increase of five hundred and fifty-three thousand. The Public Financing Authority, there's a minimal change of two hundred dollars decrease. So in total, for the city, we end total fund balance for all the funds across the board, including the general fund at forty-seven point five million.
So at the next meeting, I will bring back the last line, the bottom line, which is the Housing Authority. I will bring that back of the ending fund balance of one point seven million dollars.
Thank you.
And all the detail of increased expenditures and increasing revenues.
Yes, revenues are attachment one, and expenditures attachment two.
Again, I would like to thank you, Sonia and her staff, and all the department head for working with me. So, we are doing good, and I tell Sonia, next month, I'm starting to do the budget for next fiscal year.
It's an exciting time for you guys. The budget is your big project, right?
And audit.
Yeah, well, the budget's more exciting than the audit.
Yeah.
And with the new software, we thought it's supposed to make things easier, but it just, a challenge. We have to re-input all the numbers into the system and test it over and over and over again to make sure that the answers come out right, so.
Yeah, the difference in reports from what we were used to, to the new ones, we're not finding, and they're not equivalent. So we're having to recreate reports so that we can show you the numbers to how you're used to seeing them. But overall, it's still great, right, Lynette?
So we thought that we could just transfer the numbers from the old software to the new software. Nope, we're gonna input every number over again, so.
But we won't need to do that this year. That was just the first year.
Well, thank you very, very much.
Thank you.
Okay, we're moving on to the consent calendar.
Move it.
I got a question on fifteen, or, four, yeah, fifteen.
First and a second, but let's answer number fifteen.
Can you just explain what this one is?
Yes. What's happening is when somebody wants to do improvement to their property, to the house, and in this case, the existing right-of-way for the street is too narrow. So the city will ask for additional dedication in front of the property so we can, in the future, widen the street to the ultimate width. And the property owner agree to dedicate additional right-of-way to the city. So this is what it's for.
Got it. Where is Camelot?
Where's what?
Camelot.
Oh.
It's a fictional-
I'm sorry, number fifteen is, is a paper street in the LRD that at one time, they did the parcel map of the street, and then they dedicated, but they were built-
Never made it.
So, so we vacate that, kind of erase them off, and so that we can create a new street for the, for the LRD, so.
Okay, thank you. Anything else? We have a first and a second?
No.
Oh, sorry, Dr. Daley.
Question that is not on the consent calendar, but with what you just said about streets widened and narrow and so forth, how's that all gonna work out on California? Because there are wide areas and narrow areas, so just help me understand that.
I'm glad you asked, because right now, we already awarded contract to Riverside Construction to widen the road, and, and there's-
All the way from, from Brookside, all the way to, or Barton?
Barton Road, Barton Road, all the way to-
Redlands.
Not, not yet, all the way to the Indonesian Church. What happened is, this, this property owner of three pieces of property that gave us, that gave us the right-of-way dedication that can build, widen the street, so we can do that. There's three, four, I'm sorry, four pieces of property, three on the south side of Park Avenue, that if I widen the street, I will be hitting her living room. So, so it'll be a taking, so to do that, I have to purchase the whole lot. And the same thing go through with the second and the third one. The third one, I have to take down the whole house, whole building.
So if I understand you, we'll be good from Barton to Indonesian Church.
Where we move it back?
It's north of the Indonesian Church, we have issues.
Correct, correct, but slowly, when they, when the property are for sale, or they want to do any improvement, then the city will ask for dedication. With exception of that house at the southeast corner, we probably have to buy the whole piece of the property and widen it. Now, on the west side of California-
That could take a while. I mean, that could take a while.
I've been talking to her. But, but on the west side of the street, that will be where the new apartment, a new project is coming in, so there will be widened that west side of the street as part of the improvement, they will open.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
Eventually, we can.
Okay, Madam Clerk.
The motion is to approve the net increase to revenues of five million, eighty-six thousand, seven hundred, and net increase to appropriations of four million, two hundred and eighty-four thousand, three hundred, minus the revenues and net increases of the Housing Authority budget as presented and summarized by funds in attachments two and attachment three respectively, with the Housing Authority portion to be brought back on the March twenty-second Housing Authority agenda.
Let's pause it, yeah. Did we, did we need a motion to approve that, or was that informational?
I think we skipped the number five.
Did we need a-
Did I read the wrong one?
We made a motion on the consent, but is that, is that-
Yes, I think-
To accept a motion on that?
As the city clerk indicated.
Okay, so we will need a new motion in a second.
All right, Lynette.
I'll second.
The motion was by Daley, okay. So I'll re-
I don't think you have to restate it, I think, does she need to restate it?
No, she's already stated it.
So I'll take role, Councilman Jindal?
Yes.
Councilman Leonard? Councilman Rigsby?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Daley?
Aye.
Mayor Dipper?
Yes.
The item was approved.
Thank you, and we did have a first and a second on the consent calendar also, but I don't, was it Dr. Rigsby? Thank you. And we did have a first and a second on the consent calendar also, but I don't, was it Dr. Rigsby and? Oh, okay. Good?
Okay, the motion is to approve all the items on the consent calendar as presented. Councilman Jindal?
Yes.
Councilman Leonard? Councilman Rigsby?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Daly?
Aye.
Mayor Dupre?
Yes.
The items on the consent calendar were approved as presented.
Thank you very much. Item number eighteen was removed and deferred. Moving on to item nineteen, authorizing and signing a letter of support to the Military and Veteran Affairs Committee in support of AB sixteen twenty-three, which is the state income tax exemption for military retirees on their service pensions. Do we have any questions on that?
What's the background for this? I'm assuming there's already been discussion on it, right?
I don't think so. I have the same question. Give us some context.
I don't have a whole lot of context on it. This was just, we were asked if we would support this legislation. As it's presented, it basically does away with tax on a on a military service pension.
And I'm not opposed to it. I just don't understand.
Who's sponsoring the legislation?
Ramos, James Ramos.
It's one of those things where I'd like to see the who are the pros and cons, like they do on the ballots.
Do you want to bring it back, defer it?
Because I know how this stuff is usually done. You know, if an organization has a lobbyist, they'll come in and they'll say, this one we recommend, oppose unless amended. This other one we oppose unequivocally. This other one we support. So, you know, we don't really have the context, but I'm I'm a big, big supporter of veterans. And I know how their retiree pensions are usually not very large, so.
So why don't we ta- we'll table it until next meeting, and then we can reach out to Assemblymember Ramos's staff and see if they can. Would you like to have him come do a presentation or just a
Because usually these guys have not only their military pensions, but Medicare and
Yeah, they may have a lot of other things, and it may be, it may end up being, you know, a sop to people that don't need it, but that would be something we'd need to investigate. And I think it helps to just read, maybe Google it and find out who's pro and con.
Okay, so we'll table that and bring that back next in two weeks.
Is Jindal comfortable with that? Okay.
John, good? Okay, moving on to number L, I said number L, item L, reports of council members.
I have something.
Okay.
The most consequential announcement I've ever made under this item, and that is that the San Bernardino International Airport has a commercial airline.
Yep.
It was announced today.
Pesky's not here to present this. I'm stunned.
After all these years, after all the naysayers. Yeah, August four is the first flight, and it's too late to get on that flight. I think it's fall. But the next day is half price compared to the first day, so I'm going on Friday.
But but seriously, we need, I mean, that that's potentially a big deal. I've been hearing
Potentially, it's it's the biggest biggest thing in a long time. This is
If it works.
This is the this is the glass ceiling breaking for that airport. And once, if we can perform well, then we should be getting lots of airlines knocking on our door to to come in, and we'll have people fighting for limited slots eventually.
But what I'm saying is that if I want to fly from San Bernardino to Dallas, how do I know how to book that?
Well, currently, you're you're going to have to go through San Francisco, so I wouldn't I wouldn't recommend it. And they and and the airline we're getting is called Breeze.
Breeze?
Yes, and they're a little
Sounds like a deodorant, isn't it?
Well, it's
It's the guy who started JetBlue.
Yeah, he started JetBlue, and he's, this is his fifth airline, and they've all succeeded, so. And his his operation is out of Utah, but their routes are currently concentrated in the southeast. And the farthest west they went until just recently was San Antonio, Texas. The airline is only one year old, so the fact that they're betting on San Bernardino is is a really big thing because, you know, they they're and they've been looking at us for a long time, the people who are involved, and said, this is an underutilized airport, and and that's why they jumped on it.
So, and I'm serious about this because I've been hearing about this dating back to my days on whatever it was, airport board or what's the other one, anyway. And and so this is a big deal because we've been hearing this is on the horizon for a long time. So I'm certainly willing to promote this among constituents that I know. But I need to know more about it. Can we get
There's supposed to be a
Flybreeze, flybreeze.com.
There's there's
There's an article out on it.
Yeah, there's going to be a press packet, too, I think, that was going to be released to the cities.
I wouldn't be surprised if it's on the front page of the
It's on the Sun already. It was on the Sun this afternoon.
You're on you're on the front page.
Front page of what?
Yeah, I didn't get
The Sun.
What?
The SB Sun.
San Bernardino Sun.
Okay, okay. I I'd like to request a flight.
Ovi's not technically involved anymore.
Ovi should come and do a presentation.
Ovi works for one of the businesses on the airport.
Yeah, but this has been a passion of his for years.
I'm sure he's willing to comment.
At my request.
Quick question about that. So I I know the first flight is like forty-nine dollars. Is that going to be the price? Like after the first week?
Uh, well, it's it's, no, it's forty, it's forty-four dollars each way. Well, it's forty-four dollars, I think, round trip. If you get a five-dollar discount five-dollar discount for downloading the app on your phone.
You're making me nervous now. I feel like I've got to buy newspapers to get a coupon to make this thing work.
So it goes, it's not, it goes from here to San Francisco, then to Utah, and then back. So, yeah, it's it's, I mean, it's, we're Provo, right, Utah? No?
Yeah, it's Ogden or Provo or something like that. But this is this is an airline that uses secondary
You can make connections. Provo, I didn't know they had an airport.
Yeah, this this is the kind of airline that uses a secondary airport, and that's what we are, so.
But it's all, but it's all brand-new aircraft, right?
Yeah, they're flying Airbus A two twenties, brand new.
Yeah. It's got to be worth just sitting in a brand-new, come on, it's like a new car smell, Ron.
Yeah, it's way cheaper than driving.
Serious, I'm serious. Very, so thank, thank you very much for all your hard work with the Airport Authority and
And you.
IVDA and everybody that's been there. Milford, this goes back, well, I don't want to say how long, but I'm pretty sure you were involved in this to one point.
Way back to when Milford was in the military and, you know, Norton, they, no. I'm I'm serious, though, in saying that I'd like a presentation on this. This could potentially be a big deal because we've been talking about this for a long time.
Well, it's the it's the foot in the door of a big deal because, like I said, if we perform well, then they will expand. And what I hope is that they treat us like their west coast hub, because they really don't have a hub yet.
But to perform well, they've got to do effective marketing.
No, it's that's not our job. Our job is not to market. It's the airline's job to market. It's our job to provide airport services. So we don't want to mess up people's luggage. We want to have everything on time. We don't want to have any block blocks to progress from our perspective. That's what they expect from an airport. And they spend a whole bunch of time going out there and weeding the parking lot. I mean, that parking lot was built fifteen years ago and never used, so, but everything's up to snuff now, and 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 they they even had to repaint the water fountain because it had mold and stuff in it, so everything is really looking sharp over there.
Good for them. I mean, that's good news.
The IVDA spent a couple hundred million dollars upgrading that airport for passenger travel, and it's never been used. I mean, seldom, or just for a little private, you know, nothing commercial.
Okay, moving on to reports of officers.
I got one. Oh, sorry. All right, so on February twenty-third, we had a meeting with the San Bernardino County Committee on School District Organization. This is regarding the west part of Loma Linda. Yeah, the west part of Loma Linda, so Laurel Heights, and then the mobile home that's there. They've never had anything like this come before them, ever, so we're the first time. There were a lot of questions of how exactly the process goes. We did a presentation, and then there was a presentation from the superintendent from the Colton Unified School District, who obviously have concerns themselves. Our request at this point is making sure that we have the correct information because no one really has the data that we need to really determine if this is the right course of action or not. So that's the request coming from our end. But I thought it was a good meeting. A lot of people were receptive. Thank you to the mayor for bringing up some really good points on the call as well.
I gotta say, Councilmember Jindal did a phenomenal presentation, and he he was well-prepared, and I thought it was it was really awesome. I couldn't watch it because I couldn't get on with the passcode to Zoom, but I dialed in on the phone and was able to listen to it. And a lot of residents and people came out and made comments, and it's been something that you've supported, so you did a great job. Okay, I think that adjourns our council meeting, and let's move into the review of the Housing Authority. Call this Housing Authority to order. Mr. City Manager, is there anything to be added or deleted?
No, sir.
Any reports from the public, anyone wishing to speak, run up now. Seeing nobody, we'll move on to our consent calendar.
Love it.
First and a second, oh, we got it. Madam Clerk? I I know, he was almost there.
The motion is to approve the consent calendar items on the Housing Authority agenda. Councilman Jindal?
Yes.
Councilman Leonard? Councilman Rigsby?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Daly?
Aye.
Mayor Dupre?
Yes.
And I do apologize for missing that mid-year budget item on the agenda, so it'll be on the next one.
Okay, we'll close the Housing Authority and open the successor agency. Are there any items to be added or deleted?
No, sir.
Any members of the public? This is your last chance. No, no, nobody running forward? Okay, we'll move on to the consent calendar here, which is only the minutes from February eighth. From our council meeting, but they weren't attached. That's okay.
I'm sorry, another I'll post it on the next agenda.
Okay.
They are completed.
We'll table that, and that concludes the successor agency agenda. Thank you, guys, for coming out tonight.